Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the University of Scranton's Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Servants. The center goes by the acronym KEAPS. My name is Johnny Sinclair and I am an intern for KEAPS. ECTV is taping tonight's debate. This is not a live broadcast. The taped debate is also available on YouTube via links from the KEAPS website. Tonight's debate offers an opportunity for voters to learn about the candidates running for four-year terms on the Scranton City Council, so that you, the voters, can make informed choices at the polls on November 7th. In addition to the four-year terms on Scranton City Council, voters are also asked to choose a candidate to serve for a two-year term. While we are unable to host a debate with those candidates, we encourage voters to evaluate the policy positions and statements of the three candidates running for the two-year position. These candidates are John Howe, Darwin Shaw, and Gerald Smurl. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce four candidates for this evening. Mr. McAndrew, Mr. Day, Mr. Payne, and Dr. Rothschild. For more information about the candidates, please see their bios by visiting the resources tab on the KEAPS website. At this time, I would also like to introduce our moderator for this evening, Dr. Joanna Hopper, Director of KEAPS.
Thank you, Johnny. This is how we'll proceed. The candidates will have two minutes to answer each question unless I specify otherwise. Anytime not used to answer a question is gone. Time cannot be saved for future questions. Our timers will hold up a 30-second sign for the candidates to see when there are 30 seconds left in their time to answer a question. When the two minutes are up, our timers will hold up a sign that says "stop." The candidate who's answering may complete their sentence after the stop sign is held up, but if they go on for too long, I'll need to interrupt. Each candidate has three one-minute rebuttal opportunities. If a candidate wants to respond to an answer given by their opponent, they just need to ask for a rebuttal. Anytime not used during a rebuttal is gone. After all questions have been asked and answered, each candidate will have two minutes to deliver a closing statement. Candidates drew lots to determine who would answer first for the first question. We will then rotate between the candidates as to who answers each question first. If the candidates are ready, we'll now move on to our first question. Everybody good? All right. Based on the earlier drawing, Mark Payne will answer the first question first. So the topic for the first question is about top policy priorities. If you are elected to serve as a member of the Scranton City Council, what will your top policy priority be and why? Mr. Payne, we'll start with you.
I think my top policy and priority would be the blight in the city right now. It's definitely worse in the last four or five years than it's been. As far as I can remember, I've been a resident here for 40 years. And I think that's number one on my list.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild?
Blight has been a top priority for me as Chair of the Committee for Community Development on City Council. I get a lot of complaints that I forward to code enforcement regarding blight. And I've done numerous walks around different neighborhoods with residents and talked through the issues. And there are a lot of things that we have worked on to address blight already. It's definitely still a problem, something that I want to continue working on. But we've added code enforcement officers, added vehicles for them to increase visibility. We have the Open Gov tracking system now. We encourage residents to contact us through 311 so that those complaints can get forwarded to the appropriate department. And there's just a number of initiatives. We've worked to address the quality-of-life ordinance with increasing tickets or taking away ones that maybe didn't make sense. We've also added the rental registration ordinance. And some of the items in there, I'm hoping, will help with the issues that we have with absentee landlords. So there are a number of ways that we're already working on the problem, but I think we could do better with reducing the number of condemned properties. We have demolished, I think, over like 50 properties in Scranton that need to be taken care of. But we also want to work to help rehab them. And we have grants for people to be able to do that. There's just a lot of options that I want to make sure gets out there. And also addressing the empty vacant lots that we have in the city that are landbanked owned. We could do better at that. And there are some things coming to council now to work on addressing foreclosure properties.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tyler Day. I'm one of the candidates for City Council. I think one of my, well, probably my biggest priority, if I'm lucky enough to serve over the next four years, would be addressing the deteriorating tax base in the city. I think any municipality, city, town, township, once you lose the middle class, it's very hard to come back from that. And there's a lot of middle-class families that are leaving. There's a lot of young people who grew up in Scranton that love the area, that are looking to stay in Lackawanna County. But they're looking, you talk to them, they basically say anywhere but Scranton. And the common themes I hear with that is the wage tax. We have the highest wage tax in the county, one of the highest wage taxes in the state by far. It's really not even close. The schools, I know a lot of people that have come through the Scranton School District. They've done very well. But just objectively, our schools compare lower than the other school districts in Lackawanna County. And crime's another issue, too. Again, I think Scranton's a relatively safe city for a city its size. But if you're looking to where you want to locate your family, and you can choose between Scranton and a municipality that's bordering us in the Abingtons, North Pocono, or some of the other boroughs, a lot of those families are choosing to go elsewhere. So I think we need to address those issues to grow the tax base here in Scranton.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, well, first of all, thanks for hosting this, as always. My two biggest issues, what I hear the most complaints about, and they're priorities for me, is blight and crime. And they kind of go hand in hand. So with regards to blight, we've made some headway with code enforcement. We have. But the issue that remains that I've seen for four years is consistency and follow-up on these properties. And I know there's some barriers with regards to demolition, that we have to have an inspection for asbestos and abatement. It's a federal mandate, but we need to get better at it. Of course, we can, I believe. But abandoned properties harbor criminal activity. It's a proven statistic. You can't pick up the paper once a week without seeing horrible crimes that are being committed in the city. I'm a chairman of public safety, so it's a big concern of mine. And we have an excellent stellar police department, but they need some help. So I recommended this in the past, and it's still a recommendation of mine, that the police needs to work in tandem with a task force with the state police to help address these issues. And along with code enforcement being more consistent with regards to blight of properties and enforcement and follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question deals with infrastructure. Dr. Rothschild, you'll answer this question first. Recently, the city of Scranton endured deadly and costly flooding. By the extent of the damages, it is apparent that the city's infrastructure was not prepared for storms of this scale, even though the city has historically dealt with flooding. How do you plan to address the city's infrastructure to ensure that Scranton residents are safe and prepared for future weather events?
Thank you for the question. Yes, stormwater is a top priority. And the flooding that occurred back in September was certainly devastating for a lot of homes and a lot of people living there. And I sympathize with all the people who had endured that. And I've since been able to visit many of those locations and to talk to those homeowners. And even just last week, we were doing that in the Kaiser Valley and able to see, really in person, where those issues lie. And we do have a lot of funding devoted to stormwater from our ARPA budget. A large portion of that is going to stormwater projects. And there has to be studies initially, then a design phase and a construction phase. So it does take some time, unfortunately. And those weren't able to be completed in time for this storm. But I'm hopeful that we can make substantial changes to prevent future flooding. And I think it's very important to all of our council. We've voiced concerns over it as well as the mayor's administration. And we're going to continue to see that those repairs and changes take place. There was just a meeting the other night for the East Mountain Study Report. And there was already some work that had been done for stormwater at Dale and Parrott. And then there's, like, each neighborhood is going to be getting addressed as well as the ones that unfortunately had the most severe flooding back in September.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
So when it comes to natural disasters, I was actually in Charlotte last weekend at a conference, and there's people from all over the countries. And when talking to people from other places in the country, I think, thank God I live in northeastern Pennsylvania, because we don't have earthquakes, we don't have tornadoes, we don't have hurricanes like they have to deal with. But at the same time, we do have natural disasters here in northeastern Pennsylvania and in Scranton. And we need to be prepared for those, especially when it comes to flooding. We're in a valley. We're basically in a bowl. We know the areas that are prone to flooding. We know the areas that typically do not flood. On council recently, there were the residents from the Kaiser Valley that came in. They were talking to council, they were talking to anyone who would listen. Basically, that there was a house that was built on West Mountain. A pipe didn't drain like it used to. These were issues that the residents knew, that the residents were concerned about. So I think we need to look at the areas that are prone to flooding in the city and make sure that the infrastructure in those places are ready, because there's going to be another torrential downpour, whether it's next month, whether it's next year, whether it's two years from now. These events do happen, and we need to be prepared for it.
Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, so infrastructure, from the federal ARPA plan, a lot of the money from the federal ARPA is donated to infrastructure. Our ARPA money, there's a great deal of it dedicated to stormwater management. Some of it's been moved from that to disaster relief. All right, so the initial study has taken place, okay? And then next step is the planning, and then after that, construction. That can take years, all right? I've visited Kaiser Valley and other parts of the city that were most affected. There's a couple of quick fixes that are not being heard. As you just mentioned, there is a pipe up there. Every resident knows about it. I was up there on Friday, and it was disconnected somehow by a neighbor who built a house. I mean, it's not been confirmed yet. There's a little more investigation that has to take place. But it's been identified by the residents. I believe the residents. They lived there. They encountered these storms. This was the worst. But what contributed to the houses that went underwater was this piece. And it's a piece, it's a pipe that's not connected when it used to be and used to go into Kaiser Creek. It's been identified. I brought it up at multiple meetings. This is a quick fix. We can't wait for the construction or the planning, construction phase to incorporate that. This is something that could be done immediately. It should be. And the pump house, it's an issue. I was up there, too. It fails a lot. And if you look at it, the power source is out on the outside of the pump house, but I can reach it. So that needs to be elevated. There's a pole and a wire there. Just hook it to a pole. So it doesn't short out with water in the event this happens again. So these are issues. Of course, there's long-range plans, which we're hoping for. Thank you.
Mr. Payne, same question?
It's a shame that it took this storm to bring this to the forefront. I've been watching council meetings for years on TV. And the last year, I've been attending them. And there's been a few of the residents that were showing up and complaining that they were going to have issues. They knew this. They'd been reaching out to the city and explaining that they have problems there. And they got no help. So now we have the storm, so now we're reactive. Now we're all trying to take care of the pumps, we're trying to dredge the rivers, dredge the tributaries, clean all the problems, take care of these broken pipes. This all should have been handled, or at least looked into, a year ago. And maybe we would have saved some of these problems back then, or now. I think we definitely need to start being more proactive instead of reactive in the city as far as the stormwater is concerned. Right now, from what I understand, there's a regional stormwater authority that they're trying to form. Nobody wants that, of course, because as soon as they hear the word "authority", they think taxes, and that's understandable. But we do need to get all of the surrounding areas to talk and work together. Because, I mean, that water that came into that area down there, that didn't all come from Scranton. A lot of that water came from West Mountain, came up the hill even worse, Lakewood Side. A lot of that came from Clark Summit. All that had to, we all need to work together. All the garbage that washed down, nobody takes care of those creeks. Nobody takes care of those tributaries that run into Lakewood's Creek or into Kaiser Creek. That's all got to be maintained. We got to get on the game, and we have to do it the right way. Thank you.
I would like to offer a rebuttal.
Sure. That'll be your first rebuttal?
Yes, understood. Thank you. So I just want to clarify what I said and just respond to this being reactive. That money that was already earmarked from ARPA for stormwater and those studies that had already been taking place, that was not because of this study. We've known for a long time about these locations that are prone to flooding and have hurt the residents, and rightfully so, put money towards fixing the problem. And unfortunately, it does take a long time. And like I said, we weren't able to rectify the situation prior to this to prevent the damage that occurred. But it's not anything new for us. We already planned on doing these fixes and already put the money towards it. Now we're hoping there will be additional money from FEMA and PIMA if it's approved. And that will be of great help, too. If not, we'll put towards it what we need.
Thank you. The next question deals with housing. The Institute and University of Scranton's recent 2022 Living Wage Study describe the increasing pressure residents face when pursuing safe and affordable housing options in the area. As a member of the Scranton City Council, how will you address housing affordability and access issues? Mr. Day, this will start with you.
Yeah, this is a tough issue for a lot of people. In the past, well, probably since COVID, there's been a complete, almost reset of the market value of a lot of properties in a lot of neighborhoods in the city. A lot of people's, a lot of prices for housing went up. So maybe people who could afford their first home in 2017, 2018, now it's maybe a little bit in the area that they wanted. Maybe it's a little bit out of their price range. Some people who rented before have seen their rent go up. So I think the best way to solve that is through economic development, through wage growth. We need better jobs in the area. We need more family-sustaining jobs in the region. Because if you look at housing, yeah, there's some things you can do. There's some things that the government can do. But it is very much market-driven. And I don't see the, I don't see the changes changing anytime soon, I guess. I don't think that housing prices are going to go back to what they were maybe 10, 15 years ago. And that's a good thing in a lot of respects, but for certain people, I do feel for them. And I know that's an issue.
Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, so addressing the housing issue or the lack thereof? Or are you referring to less costly housing? Is that?
I can repeat the question, would you like me?
Please, yeah.
So as a member of the Scranton City Council, how will you address housing affordability and access issues?
All right, so affordability. Well, a lot of this has to come from the state and federal level with regards to helping with housing and reduce costs and low income. At the city level, there's some housing out there. There's some, I know we have some issues with out-of-town landlords, but there are people that are purchasing houses. They want to make some affordable apartments. A lot of the issues that slows that process down is part of code enforcement and the ease of getting permits. Because I hear a great deal, being on council for four years, that the system's a little flawed. They have trouble getting permits, they have trouble contacting people, getting return calls where they want to work, they want to rehab these properties so they can actually provide housing for people that need it. And then I think with that, we need more education and awareness that this is available or there's some programs out there for these people that need this.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
I would have to agree with both Mr. Day and Mr. McAndrew. Better jobs, of course, would bring more money, so people can afford it. And on the other side, the housing situation now as far as getting permits and taking care of apartments and not being pretty much robbed by the city as far as a landlord goes is out of control. And I think we need to bring all that back to where it needs to be. So, you know, people can find affordable housing when they need it.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, this is another important question and something I've been hearing a lot about recently, especially over the past year. And so, you know, because after the pandemic, that housing increases really skyrocketed. But also rents, rent affordability is a huge issue in our city. And I'm a homeowner, I have been since 2017. But prior to that, we were renters for many years. And we were always able to find really affordable, cheap rents. And that was really helpful for us to be able to build up the money to buy our home. But you're not seeing that as much now. Now, the Office of Community Development does have several different grant programs. Some of them go through a third party. But we have ones that are for new homeowners. We have also grants that can help older adults specifically rehab their homes and do projects in their homes. And so on top of that, the rental ordinance changes that we've made, I believe, will be helpful because we have inspectors now for those rental properties that can go in there and ensure the safety of rental property. So landlords, they're charging exorbitant amounts for rent, but then they're not upkeeping the property. That's an area that we can help address. And I also think we need to be encouraging investors. There's investors who are putting up a number of buildings in the city or renovating buildings, but there's still high rents, but ones who can offer affordable housing. And I just spoke with someone over the weekend who was interested in doing that and purchasing a property in Southside. So that's really good to hear. And the Office of Community Development is always there to help people through that process. And it's easier to get permits than ever before. It takes eight days on average. People can apply online now. And we reduced permit costs. That was something that our council did.
Thank you.
Can I rebut that?
Yes, go ahead. This will be your first rebuttal.
As far as the permit thing, firsthand knowledge, it is not easier. I applied for a permit. It was supposed to be five to 10 days to get it. It was two weeks before I traveled back to the city to actually get my permit that was laying on a desk. It was never mailed. It's not easier online. That all needs to be repaired. It all needs to be fixed. Needs to be streamlined a lot better than it is now.
Thank you. The next question deals with property reassessment. Mr. McAndrew, you'll answer this question first. As a result of the recent property reassessment efforts, property owners are receiving or will begin to receive updated notices of value. The city of Scranton uses the county's property assessments in its property tax formula. Residents have expressed concerns about potential increases in property taxes during a time when high inflation continues to put pressure on families' budgets. What can and should the city do to alleviate Scranton residents' concerns regarding potential property tax increases?
Well, this whole process was a long time coming, and we all realize that. And I'm for it as long as it's fair and equitable for everyone. And it's supposed to be revenue-neutral. So with that said, we don't know, I don't know how these are going to be reassessed and the values are going to be based on. But in the end, they're supposed to be equalized. But I would like to see or take in consideration and develop some type of either policy or ordinance where the ones that will be the most affected, of course, will be the senior citizens on fixed incomes. So if that's the case, I would propose some type of tax credit, tax relief, or something to help them that will be most affected.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
It's definitely here. It's coming, and it's a long time coming. And we need it, honestly. As much as I don't want it, we definitely need it. I believe that's the biggest reason that a lot of businesses don't want to move to Scranton, particularly Lackawanna County, because they're not sure of what will happen once they buy a property here, because they know the reassessment's coming. So I think once it comes and they figure out that we're going to be a stable tax base at a certain price, we'll look forward to more people coming in here and moving in, businesses, which will be great. But on the other side, it's the elderly people that I'm worried about. The people that worked their whole lives to afford a house, pay it off. And I don't want their taxes to go through the roof. So it's got to be fair. They have to come up with a plan to make it fair.
Dr. Rothschild?
Well, property reassessment is long-needed for the city. And it's something that I've been in support of in the past. I'm glad to see the county moving forward with it. It's supposed to even the playing field for people. And so some will go up, that need to go up, and others will actually go down. And people can also still appeal their taxes after the reassessment. That's a process that people can go through if they feel that they are unfairly assessed. And I agree that maybe we should offer more programs for seniors and the older community to be able to help them with the affordability of their homes. I also want to point out that I feel like our property taxes, it's not all the city. The city is a component in that, as is the county, as is the school district. So it's altogether what makes that higher. I do hope in the future that we can actually reduce the wage tax, and then maybe that will help with the burden of taxes in the city.
Mr. Day?
So reassessment. I don't like reassessment, but if I was probably a county commissioner, I would probably vote for it. Because if they didn't vote for it, there would have been a lawsuit that they would have to do it anyway, because the property taxes in this county are so out of whack. I have a little bit of experience with property reassessment. So before I worked in my current role, I worked for an economic development agency, the NEPA Alliance. Before that, I was in the chief of staff role for State Representative Jack Rader. He represents the Mount Pocono, Tannersville area in Monroe County. Monroe County recently did a reassessment. And they were saying, when it started, a third of the properties were going to go up, a third were going to go down, a third were going to stay the same. And that's about what it ended up looking like. My worry for the residents of Scranton, however, is I think a third, the third that is probably going to go down, my guess would be, would be the people who built the McMansion in the Abingtons or in the North Pocono area 15, 20 years ago. And I'm guessing the ones that are probably going to go up is the grandparents in North Scranton that have owned their house and been in their house since 1960 and are paying 1960 property values. Because the houses that were built in 2010 are paying 2010 values on their property taxes. So I think that's going to be an issue. I don't know what the city can do about that necessarily. The biggest chunk of the property tax, it doesn't come from the city. It comes from the school district. The state recently expanded the senior rebate. I hope that'll make it then. I hope that'll be helpful to a lot of the seniors that probably will see their taxes go up. I'm not sure if there's anything else they can do. I know the city and the school district are strapped for cash, too. There's only so much revenue they can give up. But yeah, I think reassessment, it's not going to be good for a lot of the old-timers in the city, unfortunately.
Thank you. The next question deals with zoning. Mr. Payne, you'll answer this question first. The Scranton City Council is frequently involved in decisions about zoning, the regulations on structure placement and land use that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents. Debates around zoning often include residential concerns about protecting neighborhoods from additional traffic, lighting, and noise, and concerns from the city's perspective about increasing demands for services and economic development. In assessing zoning, how do you plan to balance the need? In assessing zoning, how do you plan to balance the needs of residents with the city's goals for continued economic development?
With the city's schools?
So, in assessing zoning, how do you plan to balance the needs of residents with the city's goals for continued economic development?
It's a good question. Right now, I know they changed a lot of the zoning, the R1 to R6, which I'm not in favor of at all. The zoning that they, they changed up in the top, in the Hill section should never even have appeared when that came in. Because even though they, they reduced it, they didn't get their 100-foot building or whatever it is that they wanted. The integrity of the neighborhoods need to stay what they are. That's, that's what Scranton is. We had great neighborhoods here and they need to stay that way. I'm all for progress, but in the right places. We have downtown Scranton. We have a lot of industrial areas. That's fine. But as far as changing the zoning in the neighborhood situations, I'm dead set against it.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, well, back in the spring, we did just have a vote on a new zoning ordinance that was updated and revised from, I think, over a decade ago. And those changes in there were, there were some that were certainly needed to just keep up with the, keep up with the times. There were some, you know, language in there, for example, about Airbnb, something that might have not been in there originally. And we did have, I do feel like I balanced the neighbors' concerns when it came to my vote on that ordinance and with the amendment that we passed. That was in reference to the, the Hill section and the expansion of Geisinger. So, I think it's something for us to consider on a case-by-case basis, but it's always important to listen to the, the neighbors, the people who are living there, because we, we don't want to negatively impact their quality of life. So, that's, that's important to me.
Mr. Day?
So, I agree with Mr. Payne. I'm all for progress too, but I believe that neighborhoods are for people. And the people should be put first. When discussing the, and I think the biggest, the biggest issue with the zoning ordinance that went through in the spring was the, the parking garage monstrosity that was going to be built in the Hill section. I think it's a complete shame that it's come to what it's come to. I don't know for sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if we see an empty lot there on call fax for a few years to come. And I think the way that the city went about that, city officials went about that was a complete shame. Like I said, so before my current role, I work for a state legislator and how any hospital project like that works, there's conversations going on behind the scenes, a year, two years, before any properties are being purchased, before any properties are being demolished. I think there was a lot better way to do that. That was probably one of the, that was a jewel neighborhood in the city. That was a beautiful neighborhood. And regardless of what happens now with the Geisinger situation, those houses are gone. It's an empty muddy lot right now. So, I think when it comes to zoning, when it comes to looking at where there's going to be economic growth, I do think that we need to put the neighborhood concerns before anything else.
Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, so we did adopt a new zoning ordinance recently and parts of it I liked, parts of it I didn't. I'm, I'm always about fair and equitable, like I mentioned earlier. I'm a neighborhood guy. Neighborhoods shouldn't be negatively impacted for progress. They're the ones that have to live it and, and, and deal with it every day. With regards to Geisinger, I was a no from the beginning. Never swayed, 100% no, because I listened to the neighbors. Like I said, the neighborhoods are important. They, they need to be heard. Other regards with zoning, we gotta be careful with variances. The Airbnb previously was bed and breakfast, which wasn't allowed. So, the language was changed. I believe some of this zoning ordinance was written not for everybody, but certain, certain factions within the city, which I didn't like. And it appeared that way to me. That was my, that was my perspective. So, now they're called Airbnbs, but my understanding is they also need a variance. And they're operating right now without going before, before a board to get a variance. And it's not being enforced. So, I have a problem with that. And people have come to me. So, with regards to the new zoning, it's here. We have it. We adopted it. But we have to follow it and, and take in consideration the people most affected in the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question deals with the economy. Dr. Rothschild, you'll answer this question first. Scranton has five college campuses located either totally or partially within its borders. According to the institute, only around 27% of college students in northeastern Pennsylvania plan to stay in the area and seek work after completing their studies. Other students plan to leave the area to pursue higher-paying jobs, of which there are fewer in this area. What can you do as a member of city council to attract and maintain employment opportunities that pay higher wages?
So, there, there's a number of things that I think we could do, but also that we've been working to do. We definitely want to keep the college students here in town. That's always been something that I've voiced a concern about. And as someone who was a college student from out of town who chose to stay here, it's, you know, I, I want more people like myself to, to be able to do the same. And a high-paying jo, or lower-paying jobs is certainly a reason, or maybe people feel they can't find the type of work that they're looking for in their sector. We do find that there's more people moving into the city, particularly young professionals and some people over the pandemic who were able to work from, work from home for their jobs. And so, that's, that's been a positive to come out of it. Our Office of Community Development, as part of ARPA, has been offering wage boost grants to businesses as well so that they can increase the wages that they're providing their workers. And there's a plan for how to make that sustainable for those workplaces too, and with a steady increase in the wages that they're providing. So, I feel like we're really setting the example for businesses by having that program in the city. I feel like that is really huge. And there are places like the Enterprise Center downtown, which I've had the opportunity to tour and to talk to the businesses that are there. And it's really exciting to see the ones that people are starting and, and bringing into the city. And I want to encourage more of that, of that growth, because that's definitely what we need.
Mr. Day?
So, I'll say this with regard to that question. Dr. Rothschild and I, and I might not agree on everything politically, but I'm sure glad she's here. And I, and I hope more people who do graduate from the University of Scranton, Marywood, Lackawanna, wherever, choose to stay in Scranton. The way I see it is there's a couple of times in people's lives where they're likely to move, when they go away to college, after they graduate college, and for a few years after. And then typically, I think you see people settle down, start a family, and chances are they're gonna stay in that location for the rest of their working career. So, I think that's what we need to focus on and partner with the universities. It's not gonna be just city council. The administration would need to buy into that. And work with the colleges, work with the universities, see what we can do to get students paired up in an internship. Lot of times, the best way to find your first job is where you interned. So, if those people are interning locally, there's a good chance that they're gonna stay here. I also think just the, the atmosphere downtown is gonna help. Probably 20, 30 years ago, Scranton might not be where you wanted to, you know, if you're coming from New Jersey, New York, you didn't have that local connection. It might not be where you wanted to stay. I, I think you look at the city today, I think you look at the things that there's, that you're able to do downtown. You're able to live downtown. Young people, I think in their early twenties, like that urban lifestyle, go down to the bars. That's available now. There's some beautiful apartments. So, I think it's just working with the universities to keep some of those kids here. Every student's not gonna stay here and it's unreasonable to think that they will. But if a larger percentage of them do, it's only gonna be a win for Scranton.
Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, so with regards to your question, I'd love to have as many graduates stay here, coming from all different states. And, and that can happen through economic development, working with universities themselves, and, and also at the county level. But in addition to that, I'd like to have our own kids who live here and go to school here, stay here. I'm worried about them too. I'd rather see them stay than move away. I'm fortunate. I have three beautiful daughters that live in Scranton, work in Scranton, and are very successful. We're lucky. They didn't have to move out of the area. But I, I worry about them just as much as the ones that come here and get an education and try to retain them or capture that audience. And I come from the CTC world. I'm a career in tech ed teacher. I teach culinary arts. We don't have the problem of retaining our students. It, it's, they pretty much stay in the area because there's work for them and the trades in this area. So, that's, that's never thought about or considered, but we do retain a lot. Maybe not just the, the three universities that you mentioned, but I'd like to see, you know, more economic development to allow this to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Mr. McAndrew stole some of my thunder there. It'd be nice to have the college students stay. Scranton has a lot to offer. It really does. But as he said, it would be even nicer for our own children to stay here. I have three children. One lives in Scranton. The older two moved away. I'm actually a grandfather for the first time. It'll be a month now. And she's in Kalamazoo, Michigan. So, it kinda sucks, sorry, that, you know, the kids are moving away. And I basically blame that on, we don't have the jobs here for them. And when we do have the jobs here, and I talk to people and I just say, oh geez, you know, I don't want to buy a house in Scranton. I don't want to come to Scranton. Why? The taxes. Taxes are crazy. So, you know, like, what do you mean? You know, if I, if I live here, I'm paying 1% wage tax. If I live in Scranton, I'm paying 3.4%. And I understand that. I think the first priority that we have to do is we need to lower our wage tax. We gotta get competitive with surrounding areas. Because right now, any new businesses that want to come to Lackawanna County, they're gonna come and look at ours, they're gonna look at our industrial parks in Scranton, our areas in Scranton, and realize that their employees are gonna be paying higher wage tax here. They're gonna have a hard time getting employees, as if they moved to Dunmore or Mid Valley or Taylor or wherever. So, that's the biggest thing, I believe, that we need to do. And I think once we do that, we'll, we'll start, keeping people here and attracting them to Scranton is a no-brainer. Scranton's a beautiful town. It really is. There's a lot of blight here and there, but for the most part, it's a great place. It's a great place to raise a family. It's a great place to do a business. And I hope we can do that.
Thank you. The next question deals with ethics. Ethics provisions of the Charter of the City of Scranton and the City Code of Ethics seek to maintain a high standard of ethical behavior by city employees and officials. How do you plan to promote ethical behavior by city employees and officials and increase trust between the citizens of Scranton and their government? Mr. Day, you'll answer this question first.
So, I think when it comes to increasing trust, that's only gonna take time. I think a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of residents in the city are very skeptical of what goes on in City Hall, and, and I can't blame them. The little bit I, I have gotten to know, the people who are in city council right now and a lot of the employees, I do think they are mostly good people. I think they are ethical people. There might be a few misfits here and there. But I think on the whole, we have good people working for our city. But with anything in life, you know, when you breach someone's trust, it takes time to rebuild that. So, I think as a, if I'm lucky enough to serve, if I'm fortunate enough to serve, I hope, I, I would need to be on my best behavior to earn back a little bit of that trust, a little bit at a time with the residents of the city.
Mr. McAndrew?
Okay, so with regards to ethic, ethical behavior, with you talking about employees within the city, it starts with the hiring process. Employees need to be vetted, all right? Since I'm there, I asked for, first of all, handbook. Took me two and a half years to get the city to create an employee handbook. They didn't have one. They didn't have job descriptions. Employees aren't, weren't properly vetted, because I've heard, you know, some of them might have some ethical issues that are currently employed. That's not my job to investigate, but I think the department heads, it's their responsibility, HR's responsibility to make sure that the hires are, you know, are appropriate. It's their job to make sure that this, this unethical behavior doesn't happen through, through evaluations that I asked. I asked for evaluations of employees or performance appraisals for three years. And there's, every year, they're gonna start doing it. So, when it comes to, you know, with regards to ethics in, in general, I mean, people have their own ethical standards, I believe. I believe for the most part, we have a very ethical group of employees. I think, you know, in the past, we have a horrible history with regards to it, but I think we've improved. But in order to prevent it, we, everybody has to work towards it with regard to department heads, vetting, the vetting process, the hiring process, and so on. Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Will you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. How do you plan to promote ethical behavior by city employees and officials and increase trust between the citizens of Scranton and their government?
And, and therein lies the problem, is the, the transparency in the city. We don't have any. So, a lot of the citizens don't trust the employees. They can't walk in the City Hall. They can't make a phone call and get a return call. They can't ask a question without being criticized. Employees that I do talk to, I, I find out that morale in City Hall is at an all-time low. There's a lot of bickering going on and it's all about the hiring process, as, as Mr. McAndrew said. A lot of them aren't vetted the right way. The transparency issue is the biggest killer. You can't walk in City Hall anymore. I mean, I'm a resident here my entire life. I can remember walking in the front door, going right through City Hall, going down to the police department if I needed to, even up to the fire department if I had to. You can't do that. It's blocked off. It's locked off. There's, there's, you can't get in there. We need, we need transparency. We need to get in, we need to be able to talk to our department heads when we have a problem and when we have a question.
Dr. Rothschild?
It's no secret that our city and our county have been long plagued by political corruption. And when I first came out to council four years ago, that was a lot of what I heard when I was speaking to people, when I was knocking on, on doors. And they wanted to see people who could, who could be independent and weren't corrupt and, and wanted to stop the nepotism. And I feel like we've made a lot of changes in city government to be able to do that. And one thing that we didn't have previously that we have now is an ethics board. And I think that's something great to have. And I believe it's filled now. We've just added some more members onto it. And people can go to the ethics board with anonymous complaints. I would also say that we, we need to hold our elected officials and our employees too, to high standards for ethics. I know as a physical therapist, every two years, in order to get my continuing education credits, I need to take an ethics course. That's several hours long. And, you know, throughout the day, I, I think I, I make sure that what I'm doing is an ethical decision. And I do the same thing on council. And it's, it's very important to adhere to, to those ethics and to behave in an ethical manner, especially when you're elected by the public, you're there to serve the public. And that's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question deals with the environment. Mr. McAndrew, you'll answer this question first. The City of Scranton has recently taken several efforts toward improving the environment, including the creation of an environmental advisory council, work on a sustainability and climate action plan, and certification through the Sustainable Pennsylvania Program, among other efforts. According to Section 127 of the Pennsylvania State Constitution, the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. What are your plans for ensuring the citizens of Scranton have access to clean air and clean water and access to natural resources?
Well, the Environmental Board was just formed. And we really haven't had any feedback from them yet. But stormwater is a big part of what you're saying, the environment. But stormwater is a big part of what you're saying, the environment. So a lot of money's dedicated to that. A lot of money's focused on part of that and the infrastructure with regards to, you know, keeping health, health, safety, and welfare of, of our residents. This is going to be something that's, it's a moving project because we're just actually getting into it. So I look forward to that and, and having open discussion how to maintain that.
Mr. Payne?
Keeping the, the city green, is that what you're asking, basically?
Mm-hmm. I can repeat that question, would you like?
Sure.
Yep. What are your plans for ensuring the citizens of Scranton have access to clean air and clean water and access to natural resources?
That's a good question. And it's, it's something that the city actually needs. But throwing money at all these Green New Deal ideas that they come up with, I don't think is the answer. I mean, recently, we got, I think, eight, eight or some electric cars in the city. What it takes to make those cars, the batteries, and then what we have to do to get rid of all them is a hundred times dirtier than any vehicle. Not to mention the, the gas that we would have used in a vehicle comes out to be about $17 a gallon in electric to travel the same mileage. They just came out with that study. It, it's incredible. So we're wasting a lot of money. We need to work a little smarter, a lot harder, and do the right things. And I think we'll all benefit from it down the road.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, I think there are a number of ways that we can take environmental initiatives, a lot of things that we've never done as a city before. And we're finally starting to get on now. There was the addition of the Environmental Advisory Council, which I was happy to see and I look forward to what things they bring forward to council and other potential initiatives for the city. I believe there will be maybe a climate action plan or something that we'll see in the, in the future. And I think that will be helpful for us making that plan as a city going forward, what we want to, what we want to do. And, you know, we could work with groups like the LRC, the Lackawanna River Coalition. They're very important to helping take care of our, of our rivers, of Lackawanna Rivers specifically. They've done a lot of work over the year, which I'm really appreciative of. And I, you know, I think that the electric vehicles are actually an added benefit to the city. And that's something that's actually setting the stage for, for other places and something we can be more of a leader on instead of being behind on issues. That's something that I think we're a little ahead on with, with cities of our size and adding those electric vehicles to our fleet for code enforcement. And I think there are a number of things that we could do with recycling. I personally want to see a lot more garbage cans and recycling cans throughout the city. It's always really hard to find one. And then people are going to litter as a result if they can't find one. And I've been to other cities where they have them separated. I think we need more of a dedicated, like a composting program and a way to help residents who are interested in that. There's a lot of cleanups that go on with the, the neighborhoods. So I encourage anyone to be a part of that. But there's cleanups that the city has run as well.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Thank you for the question. I, I think one of Scranton's best attributes, I think one of Lackawanna County's best attributes is our natural beauty and the outdoor recreation activities that we have available to us. No one's going to want to come here to ski montage. No one's going to want to come to see, come here to see Na'ag. If it's, if it doesn't look good, if there's garbage everywhere, if we have dirty water, all that good stuff. So I'm all for taking care of the environment when it comes to that climate action plan. The administration released a RFP back in the spring or early summer, I believe, seeking a firm to basically carry out the environmental action plan. It was about a four, five page RFP. It's on the city's website, on their procurement website, at least it was. I encourage you to take a look at it. A lot of stuff that they're looking for in there. It doesn't have anything to do with, it doesn't actually have anything tangible in it. It doesn't help the environment. It's just the way I see it, another, another consultant for the city to hire that's really not going to provide any, any benefit to the residents. So all for the environment, but I think you need to look at everything independently. And that climate action plan, I would definitely say, give that a second look.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the candidates to give their closing statements. Based on a drawing, Mr. McAndrew will go first.
Okay, I'll be short and sweet. So I think everybody knows I'm seeking reelection. This is my 10th year of public service, and I love it. My motivation has always been the needs and interests of either students when I was on school board, or my own family members, my own daughters, or the needs and interests of the past four years of the residents of Scranton. I like to think I've been their voice. I'm told I've been their voice. I'll continue to be their voice as long as the voters out there are happy with my performance, still have faith in me. Come, you know, this November, I humbly ask, ask for their vote. Like I always say, I, I don't report to anybody in City Hall, but I do report to all of you. So thank you for the invite tonight and hosting this. And best of luck to the rest of the candidates that are here.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the university, thank this forum. I'd like to thank the attendees here and the candidates who are coming. This is my first time ever running for office for anything. And, you know, and lots of people, I think everybody should do this at least once in their life. They really should. Because I do have a newfound respect for all of them that decided to do this. But I think the reason that I really am running and why I, why I think I'm the best choice, not to be cocky, but is my accessibility. Right now, if you guys have a problem in the city, you can email somebody, you can call somebody, you can wait for a return. Not one of these guys up here have a job that you can walk into during the day. I'm in the same building, I own my own business, I've been there for 40 years. If you have a problem, you have a question, you have a concern, you have an issue, you need help with something, you can come into my business any day of the week. I'm there every day. And anybody that knows me can confirm that. Tell me what your problems are. I'll try my best to help you. If I don't have an answer, I'll try to find an answer for you. But the best part is, if I don't do what I say I'm going to do, I can't hide. You come back the next day. What'd you do? Did you forget about me? That's not the way it's going to work. I want to help the people, I want to get Scranton back on track. We deserve better. And I'm humbly asking for your, your vote November 7th.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild?
Thank you to the fellow candidates tonight for this debate. Thank you to the University of Scranton for hosting it. All debates that I've, I've been to have been here at the University of Scranton, but usually in different rooms. And it's funny that we're here in this room tonight because when I was a college student here, I was actually secretary of the Debate Society. I was involved in a number of clubs and groups and got roped into that. And we held debates in this very room. So it really comes full circle for me, always to, to visit the university, but to be in this room for the debate tonight. And the, the University of Scranton and the City of Scranton helped mold me into the person I am today. I've spent my whole adult life here. And I've learned so much that I've, that I've carried through my profession, that I've carried while on city council, and just in my everyday life. And I'm so proud to live here. I'm proud to be raising my family here with my wife. We have an amazing daughter. And we have another one, another child on the way. So we're just really happy to be here. And I love having the opportunity to give back to the city that I love so much. And we have made so much progress over the past four years. I'm really proud of the work that we have done on council. And I spoke about much of that work tonight, but there's still plenty of work to do. And I plan on being there to do that work. And I hope that you will reelect me so that I can do that. Please vote for me on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Yeah, I kind of want to echo everyone's sentiments when it comes to thanking the university for giving us this platform. When it comes to, well, when it comes to government, I think a lot of people always think about what's, how dysfunctional is in Washington? How dysfunctional is in Harrisburg? But probably 99% of the issues that you're going to deal with in your daily life is going to have, is going to come down to local government. And that's really the level of government that I think a lot of people pay attention to the least. So I hope people in the city take some time to watch this. I hope people in the city take a time, take some time to read the story that's going to be in the paper. That's, you know, I hope they take some time to look at our candidate website to see really what we're all about. The reason I'm running, I'm 31 years old. I'm probably going to be in the city 60, 70 years coming. And, and I, I really want this to be a place, I want this to be the place where you can raise your family, where hopefully my children someday have opportunity that they want to stay. I don't want to be in Mark Payne's boat where I have to go out to Michigan to visit, to visit my grandkids, so. But I think, you know, that time's going to be here before I know it. So I think there's real changes that could be made in the city. I think we are going in the right direction, but I think there's a lot more that we can be doing. Like I said, I hope you take some time to look at my campaign website, see what I'm all about. And I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank, yep. We thank the candidates for giving of their time to engage with voters. We would also like to thank ECTV for taping, for our intern Johnny Sinclair, and our timekeepers Kevin and Denise Nordberg for their assistance. Traditionally, the University of Scranton's Political Science Department and keeps have worked with the Lackawanna County League of Women Voters to host and coordinate debates. Unfortunately, the Lackawanna County League has recently disbanded. We thank members of the county league for their decades of work for good government. Remember, the last day to apply for a mail-in ballot is October 31st. The deadline to return your voted absentee or mail-in ballot is 8:00 PM on November 7th. Voting in person at your assigned polling place occurs on November 7th between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Thank you for watching this program sponsored by the University of Scranton's Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. Have a great evening.